Good evening, everybody. It is Wednesday, June 5th, 2024 for a regular Ottawa City Commission meeting. Let's start with roll call, please.
Mayor Skidmore.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Kayler.
Present.
Commissioner Clayton.
Present.
And Commissioner Crowley.
Present.
Wonderful. We are all here tonight, so I want to welcome everybody watching on some form of social media, plus the gallery is full, standing room only, it looks like. So we'll welcome everybody to be here tonight. I just hope we don't have a fire somewhere, right? So we're, okay, we're covered. You got radios or something? Okay, we're covered. Good. Thank you. All right. Good to hear. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by our city manager, Brandon.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God by whom the meek are guided, and judgment and light riseth up in darkness for the godly. Grant us in our doubts and uncertainties the grace to ask what thou would do, that the Spirit of wisdom may serve us from all false choices, and that in thy light we may see light, and in thy straight path we may not stumble. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, we'll get to start with public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight?
No.
Members, okay. We'll go on to item number seven, it looks like.
Proclamation swearing-in ceremony for new Fire Chief Sean Dillon and Assistant Fire Chief Stuart Wolson.
And I guess who's going to be taking care of that? We got swearing-in. Come forward, gentlemen. You want one at a time, or how do you want to do this?
Start with Chief Dillon.
Chief Dillon, come on up.
As you know, we entertained an exhaustive search and utilized a selection firm and a regimented process for determining who our next chief would be after Chief Mathias' long and dedicated service to our community. And through that, we were happy to promote Chief Dillon. And so with that, I would like to say congratulations. And now we will turn it over to your lovely bride to pin your bugles on.
Yay.
Or just do the badges. The other stuff hasn't come yet.
Well, don't you want to introduce her? Sean?
I will here in a second.
If I don't poke him first, he might not want to introduce me after that.
So this is my wife, Crystal. My three daughters are in the back, Lainey, Ally, and Chloe in the yellow. I'm grateful for them to be here. Really grateful for everything that they do for me. I'm away quite a bit with my military service and with the Fire Department. So I couldn't do what I've accomplished so far without their assistance and support. And so it's, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to thank the women of the Fire Department. They've supported me along the way as well. I look forward to leading them into the future. And hopefully we'll do great things.
We will now do the loyalty. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sean Dillon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Fire Chief.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Fire Chief.
Of the City of Ottawa, Kansas.
Of the City of Ottawa, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And now for the promotion to Assistant Chief of Stuart Wolson, and his wife will also be present to pin the badge on. We were fortunate to have received Stuart from Garden City. He had come to us from Garden City Fire Department prior to relocating here. So we're happy that he and his wife decided to make the move, move east. So hopefully that's the beginning of a longer migration for the rest of the state and moving to Ottawa. So with that, I want to say thank you, sir.
Okay. Crystal has a good idea.
So this is my wife, Jenny. We've been married for 29 years in August. I haven't forgotten.
It is on the inside of my wedding band, so that I can't forget it, because I can't remember.
And my mom and dad are here, one of my brothers, and all three of my kids, Wyatt, Morgan, and Simon. So I appreciate them, all the sacrifices they've done for the last 20 years, and my old shift. Means a lot that they're here, too.
All right. We'll perform here. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Stuart Wolson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Assistant Fire Chief.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Assistant Fire Chief.
Of the City of Ottawa, Kansas.
Of the City of Ottawa, Kansas.
To help me God.
So help me God.
I think during that oath, when I first did that, I think she had stated her name. I said, state your name. I realized I shouldn't have said, state your name, right? I apologize for that years ago, but I've learned how it goes. But anyway, I just want to say, both these gentlemen are highly educated. We've got their bios up here. I was going to read them. They're quite lengthy. I won't do that. But they're highly educated in this field of endeavor. And we're very, very fortunate to have both of these gentlemen serving and working with us in this community. So I'm just really excited about this. This job that you each have, it's not just handed to you. You had to earn it. And I'd say you both did an excellent job of earning that position you're in. So congratulations to both of you, and many years of success. If the Firemen want to come up here, let's get a picture with all of you behind us. And if you two gentlemen come up here and take the two chairs, the Mayor's Chair and the Pro Tem Chair.
I just got a worm.
Should have popped the horn, man. I was out driving by.
Come on, Sean. Come on. Yes. Just don't drink my water.
Here, Miss Gooden.
One, two, three.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Congratulations.
You guys are welcome to stay. It's budget season, but probably don't want to, I'm sure. I don't even want to be here. So you guys, you're good. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes from May 29, 24, City Commission meeting, as well as the agenda approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, we have the declaration. At this time, I'd like to give the Commissioners a chance to declare any conflict or communication they've had that might influence their ability to consider today's issues impartially. Seeing none, and no unfinished business, we will go to new business.
Item A, review of the 2025 operating budget, Community Service Fund.
The Community Service Fund financially supports community service, service programming requests made annually by our community partners. And I believe Melanie's going to take the lead on this one.
All right. Thank you. So we are going to just run through a couple of quick slides as a summary introduction to the fund that supports the, that supports the allocations or the appropriations that are being requested from your community partners. And then I will, I do have a slide for each one of the requestees, and then we'll, we'll just kind of do a quick summary, and then allow you to ask questions of the representatives, who I believe we have somebody here from each of them. I don't believe my slides made it in to the PowerPoint. So let's, let's start with just another review. The majority of the information was in the memo that made it into the packet for you. So as in summary for this fund, it is called the Community Service Fund, and it is, it is there solely for the purpose of funding these types of requests. It's funded by four different funds, the Water Sewer, Electric, and the General Fund. And in the packet, I believe there was a little bit of, maybe a table that showed you the difference between what kind of funding each of those transfers brought into that fund. So that's the only funding source really in this fund for you, other than, there's another revenue line in there for donations, which, to help maybe alleviate some confusion, we don't necessarily go out seeking donations specifically for the Mayor's Tree Fund, but we have had an allocation, or a donation made annually from a local donor. And so in order for us to turn around and issue that, or allocate those dollars back out to whatever agency of choice for that year, we have to have the budget authority to do that. So there's a line in there, but there's not necessarily a request that needs to be considered. Additionally, there's another line that's basically your undesignated balance, and that is, really, it would be what you would see in some of the other funds as a reserve. But this is, I think in the past years, it's been about $5,500. For this year, we have $10,000, or $4,250, and $20, you know, looking ahead, give you a little bit of flexibility should other requests come in throughout the year, and smaller requests that there might be a decision made to allocate, you know, at some future point, or reallocate if something were to get, be set aside, because maybe there's not enough funding upfront. Any of those decisions to give you some flexibility and that spending authority. So when we talk about the funding sources, in your, in your memo, there was also a table on page one that showed you the breakdown of the requests that were made. The total increase over last year is $122,512. And the significance of that is that your funding sources are coming from your user fees for each of the three utilities and property taxes supported by the General Fund. And so when we, when we talk about these requests, we were talking about how do we allocate enough funds to be able to, to appropriate for each of those requests. And they're so good at working magic. And, and then we, and then we, we'll talk about, you know, how, if it's affordable, all of those things that come up with the future conversations about mill levy, assessed valuation, all of those things. So from that perspective, we're not asking you to make a decision tonight. We're asking that we just hear about the requests that are being made and the changes from their previous year requests. And then we'll consider at a future point, once we have all of the additional information in, on the mill levy and the impact from the assessed valuation, then we'll have a little bit better conversation about the impact for that. The primary driver for all of the increases is not just the increases for the existing or current allocations, but also you received two new requests this year. Those were also included in your packet. So this table breaks down those requests a little bit for you. And because we show this with each fund, I want to go ahead and show it here. At 425, the 25 column, typically what we bring to you is a proposed column, and that's because it was a staff-prepared column for you. Because these are requests that are coming in from our community partners, we've, we've prepared it as a requested column. And in order to keep our, a fund balance that meets our designated policy of meeting somewhere around a 20% of our expenditures, we have shown that the increase, if all of these were to be approved, would be, need to be increased by $28,000 from each of those contributing funds. So that's what you have in here. It is summarized, but you do have the detail in the packet. And with that, I, like I mentioned, we'll just start with each of the agencies, and then we'll allow you to ask questions of them. You have all of their information. I might mention up front that when we send out the application, we really do ask them for quite a bit of information, especially if they're an agency that receives an audit, or if they have financial statements, or, and some of the, some of the groups in our community don't necessarily have that. And so you see a little bit different variety of the information that came in your packet, but it's an opportunity for them to also showcase themselves and their programming for you. And so the packet is incredibly long, I know, but I hope that you were able to find some really good information in there. So the first agency that we're discussing this evening is Prairie Paws, and the 2025 request is an increase of $55,200 over the prior year's allocation. The application cites that the current funding level of the $62,400 is adequate for current operations. However, they are proposing to fill a need in the community, or in the county overall, for an animal control position. So that, that's the purpose behind the increase of the $55,200. And while I know that that might bring up more questions, I know that our, you know, police chief would probably also be available to answer questions about just animal control in general. I didn't tell him I was going to tell you that, but, but he's here. So, and he's our internal expert there. So with that, I will turn it over to you to ask questions of Vanessa Cowie, if you have any.
Sure. Vanessa, yeah. Good to see you tonight.
Hiding in the back. It was a crowded room.
Why don't you just kind of give us a preview of your increase, and what are we looking at here?
Yeah, and I do want to reiterate what Melanie said. You know, the current funding is adequate for our current programs. So if the city doesn't see that this is valuable, then that's okay. But what we've heard is that there is a need for increased animal control coverage in the City of Ottawa. But I, looking into it further, it's not just something that the police department could really increase. There's, there's a scale problem. They couldn't have someone that's full-time dedicated to this. There's not really enough coal volume to justify someone that would just do this full-time. So that's why they split that person's duties across other functions in the city. So what we would see is that we would, we think we can hire this person more affordably than the police department could, and train them just in animal control. They would work for our organization. We could give them a certain level of authority. And we would also be able to have the flexibility to dispatch them outside of just the City of Ottawa. So we don't want to get into the position where we're just focusing on the City of Ottawa, because there is not enough need in the City of Ottawa to hire a full-time expert in this. So we would like to be able to dispatch that person countywide, Wellsville, Williamsburg, those types of things, as well as help us with educational opportunities as well in the community. So this is just if the city saw this as valuable. Otherwise, we're really happy with the current funding level.
Sure. And now, as far as going outside of county, are there other agencies and county, other cities contributing towards this as well? Or is this just Ottawa?
Well, Franklin County wasn't interested in funding this, but we think if we could get it off the ground, we could gather data to show that this person is being dispatched in the unincorporated areas of Franklin County. Without having that person exist, it's really hard to prove that you need them. And then Wellsville's really interested, because right now they have a really limited police force, and they have to drive so far to bring them down to Prairie Paws. And I know the police chief himself has been doing that for Wellsville. So they would love to be able to have those people stay in their community, and then we could be more flexible and more helpful.
And Wellsville has committed how much monetary commitment?
They haven't committed anything. Without someone like Ottawa or Franklin County behind this, they couldn't fund it on their own. So it really wasn't something that we would approach them with unless we got a commitment from one of our bigger partners.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So you're asking the citizens of Ottawa to fund a position that would be countywide?
A portion of the position, yes. That wouldn't be the full cost of hiring that person and providing a vehicle and training and equipment. That would be a portion that we would ask the city to fund. Our organization would make up some of the difference, and then we would go, City of Pomona is interested as well in funding part of this. So we're trying to get, do a joint-funded thing here, which is tough to get off the ground.
And is there any way of knowing how many animals have been picked up in the previous year, and what, and maybe we don't know how many runaways there are. I guess that's kind of a strange way to put it. Do we know how many are picked up on an annual basis? Any kind of numbers that we know of yet?
I don't have that number, and I don't know if, if the chief has that either. Right now, we rely heavily on the citizens to transport a lot of those dogs, and so they're not being recorded as being transported right now.
Right. Okay.
Vanessa, you had this conversation with the county commissioners?
Yes.
And I know you said they weren't interested in the position. I don't watch the meetings. Can you kind of relay to me what some of the comments were about why they weren't interested?
They don't feel that they had the need. They didn't see the value in this. I think also, right now, the citizens are carrying a lot of that, and they don't think they have the population density that causes these types of issues. They also don't have as complicated ordinances that would require enforcement in the county. There's no loose dog laws in the unincorporated space, so they just didn't see the need.
Do they get the same report quarterly or monthly that we do?
Yes.
So they see some of the, the amount of strays that you pick up in the county?
Yes. Okay, do. Thank you.
And on this, with strays in the county, right now, that's currently, how are those picked up typically?
It's usually either citizens or sheriff's deputies bringing them in.
And volunteer hours, probably, oftentimes?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's not being recorded, I don't think accurately right now, because the functions that are doing this service are not kind of formalized.
And would this person be on call 24/7, if not all the dogs are, get out between eight and five, let's say?
They don't. Yeah. No, it would be a 40-hour position that we would have some availability after hours for things that we would define as emergent. And that is something that we would probably have to formalize in an agreement of this is what the citizens can expect from this level of service. But right now, all law enforcement can access the facility 24/7, so a lot of the times, they're meeting a citizen at our facility after hours, and the citizen is the one transporting the dog.
And this includes runaway chickens?
We can do that, too. A chicken needs an Instagram page.
And is this primarily dogs and cats, or would it be if I have, you know, if someone has a fox living beneath their patio, would this be trapping of that, too? Kind of that full scope? Or is it more focused on like dogs, cats?
We didn't see that as being a need, you know, but when we contract these things, you can outline the scope of service in there and make sure that it's something that the city finds valuable. Yeah, you can give all kinds of limited authority to a public agency or a private agency for this stuff.
So it would probably be a partnership with this officer and the sheriff's department in terms of enforcement. This officer would probably identify, or not officer, I guess, this person, would probably identify, have to work with law enforcement if it ever got to enforcement?
Yeah, we would more focus on pet owner support. You know, we're, we would be less of an enforcement agency, but there would be times we'd have to lean on law enforcement. And at that point, we could hand over any kind of evidence we'd collected to a law enforcement officer, and they would then really just deal with the cases that they are trained to deal with. They're kind of overqualified to do a lot of these calls, where it's just helping someone, you know, get their dog back in their fence and things like that. Police officers should be doing police officer stuff. And we would like to do the support stuff.
Thank you.
Do you see this as, I don't mean to say like an all or nothing type situation, but it's not something that could start out as part-time and eventually build into full-time? Or is it more beneficial for it to be full-time right from the get-go?
I think it's more beneficial to be full-time. You know, we've seen in some communities where they hire someone part-time, and maybe they're underqualified and undertrained because they're part-time. There's a steep learning curve. And so we, we force it as a, as a full-time position, and then also we can utilize that person in any downtime they may have. It might be where if we can only get funding from the City of Ottawa, that we do limit the jurisdiction of that individual until we can get additional partnerships formed. But we think that person would have a lot of downtime if we just did Ottawa.
Any other questions? Anybody have?
Mr. Mayor, if, I'd like to hear if Chief Waingard would have anything he'd like to add to that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I got some more questions, Vanessa, later on the presentation here for some other things, too. Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. It's an innovative idea to consider as far as animal control function, and much of what Vanessa said about the call volume specific for one dedicated full-time animal patrol officer. For those kind of catch-and-release issues that she's talking about, there is not, you know, a full-time job for sure. But those calls do come in varying hours of the day. And when our current animal control officer is not on duty, then officers sometimes do respond to that, and other times they don't. And really, probably since the pandemic, the citizens have stepped up and do transport animals out to the shelter for us, and we do meet them out there. That's been a huge saving, so we don't have to put them in our patrol cars. We did have an occurrence one time with an officer when we did that, and the officer became ill because of some infestation issues. So there, there are some tangible benefits to something like that. And the animal patrol officer also does other things like pick up deceased animal carcasses off the roadway, set out traps at citizens' request. And he has a full report on the number of trap days each month that we have traps out for nuisance animals such as skunks, foxes, snakes, things like that, that we do go and catch that. Maybe a little bit different for this. And of course, there's been some other exotic birds and trees over near OU a couple of years ago that we spent some time trying to trap and do that. And Vanessa's also right. We are not professionally trained to do a lot of that stuff and just kind of figure it out on the go. And somebody that would have some of that specific training in animal control function might be better suited for some of those duties. But it's an interesting concept to consider. Vanessa and I did talk briefly on this earlier this year on a few other topics, and I think it's worthy of the exploration and conversation about how that might benefit. But like you have already, already mentioned and talked about, you know, the partnerships sometimes are a little bit challenging to start, but we don't know what that future might hold for who it's going to work out for. Ultimately, we hope it works out better for the citizen and the owner and the service that they're provided, whether that's police department doing that, Prairie Paws, or in some other new combination of partnership to do that.
So at 10 o'clock at night, someone has a vicious dog in their yard, yeah, what, what happens now, and what would happen if we have an officer assigned to this duty for Prairie Paws?
10 o'clock at night, it would depend on the hours of the Prairie Paws animal control function. If they were out, they would probably respond to that. If not, we would handle it just like we do now when our current animal control officer's off duty. If it's a vicious dog, officers are going to respond and try to catch the dog and safely secure it wherever that may be, back in the yard, or, excuse me, or out at Prairie Paws, if that's where it needs to be. And there are some other state reportings for animal bites and things of that nature that, that are statutorily required to report it, both through, if it comes to the hospital, then they contact law enforcement, depending on where that person was bitten, is the primary law enforcement agency that would respond to take that report. And then those reports are sent to the county health departments for quarantine information that is mandated by statute.
Well, I just wanted, if somebody had a dog in their yard, and they call 911, are they going, or are they going to have the number to Prairie Paws? They're not going to think they're to call Prairie Paws. I don't know. Is that person is connected somehow with 911 to be contacted by someone there to go get the animals? That communication been worked through, or how would that?
I don't think we've worked specifically about that, but it is something that I think we could work out.
I know how that works.
Yep. There's plenty, you know, outside of a phone call or something like that. Again, vicious dog, we're probably going to send law enforcement first, wait for animal control to show up, and then if it's safe, we could hand it off to somebody else, much like we do now. If our animal control officer goes with a patrol officer, and if it's not a vicious dog, then there are notification systems that dispatch has access to for after-hours contact.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
Chief, do you find as your officer performs those duties nowadays, that they, that while performing animal control, does that conflict a lot with when they try to do their other duties? Or do you see it doesn't happen that often? Or even vice versa?
I think the focus for our officers has moved away from the animals and more on, more of that specific law enforcement role. So I don't think- more of that specific law enforcement role. So I don't think it's not that they're, they're not interested or won't do those things, but the focus has kind of shifted. And, and much of that is, again, the, the community stepping up and helping us, where when I was an officer patrolling the streets, that didn't happen. I ran after dogs for many blocks trying to catch them and, and corral them into back of my patrol car and then drive them out to the shelter. And now, we have a lot more community support doing that for us, so our officers don't have to go out and do that.
But they may be performing a duty outside of animal control where they don't have the time to go after that vicious dog during the day or, or any other time because they're already on another, you know, call or something. So a position like this could somewhat be beneficial in a sense because that person's only directed to do animal control.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Any more questions, Chief? Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I got some more questions of Vanessa, too. Just asking some, I know with the Manhattan project, that's not the right, the Manhattan acquisition, yeah, safer way to say it. Is it working? And I assume they're autonomous financially. They're handling all their financials there and we're handling ours here. So working out that direction?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Still happy with that, yeah.
And then on one of the pages here, I see we got some, let me look here. This is page 13 on our agenda. It has some of your information here. And what I couldn't forget was, like in 2024, it has an estimate, it has grants and trusts, 91,000. But down below, the expenditures for grant expense was like 300,000.
Yeah, that is, sometimes we receive a grant in a year that we don't spend it.
Oh, you get it in a year, you don't spend it?
Yes, yes. And so then the expense will be in a year that's not in the same year as the revenue.
It's not actually expensive. I got you. Okay.
Like, we just received a grant in December, $375,000 in December of last year. We will be spending it this year. Yeah, that happens a lot.
Let me see it. Understand that. Date difference there. Okay, good.
And I, I will say, I do appreciate your, your funding agreement kind of breakdown. You know, seeing that it's $9.33 per capita. So 80 cents a month per person. I really like to break things down granularly instead of seeing 62,000 and think, would I pay a dollar a day for this service? And would most people pay a dollar a day per person for the services? How I kind of try to look at this. So I appreciate you kind of breaking it down.
And that's actually, that's a, that's a standardized kind of metric these days in animal sheltering. So if you don't have animal control, it typically costs $5 per capita to fund an animal shelter for your community. I mean, there's communities that are below a certain size where that doesn't apply and above a certain size. But communities of this size usually spend about $5 per capita. And then when you include animal control, it usually goes up to about $11 per capita. So we would still be under that kind of standard rate. So that's, we think we've got some cost savings there. Yeah.
And I suppose, are there any grants possibly for hiring a control officer?
There's really good grants for vehicles, equipment and training. Nobody wants to pay the salary. Yeah, that's a tough one to get grants for. Yeah. But we have the office space and obviously the computers, like they would office out of our location and we can support them kind of physically in that manner. We just need someone to pay the salary. Yeah.
And then just one last question I have anyway would be if you have anybody currently on your staff that's maybe not fully being utilized that could do this position on a part-time basis and other part at the shelter itself. Has that been considered?
You know, we're really kind of maxed out our team right now, especially in Ottawa. There are certain days of the week. I don't know if that's valuable to the citizens, though, to say, we do this on Wednesdays. I don't know. So right now, that's when we allocate things like trainings, staff meetings and low-cost spay neuter. We do those on the days where we're heavy staffed. And I, I don't know if it would be helpful to the citizens that have that system or not.
Well, every year, looking at your budget, I'm just, I'm happy we don't have a municipally-owned animal shelter.
It's expensive.
You certainly do a good job with your money and your revenue and you're always showing green on the screen. I like to see that.
Feels good for me, too, trust me.
Any more questions on Prairie Paws proposal?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Vanessa. Very good.
All right, our next agency request or function or activity request is for the Veterans Day activities. And the standard request has always been $1,000. I want to explain the table that's on the screen a little bit. While we've allocated and awarded $1,000 every year, in the last couple of years, that hasn't been appropriated because it wasn't requested from their group. And I don't know if it was a turnover and people or a miscommunication, whatever that might have been. The, it's been an annual request. I want to make sure that that's clear, that we've always awarded the $1,000 for the, for their activities. And so that's what that, that, the sentences there are intended to explain. And, and I want to make sure that we had a good explanation there. The applicant or the person that we have contact with is Derek Larkham and I don't know if is available. So if you have questions, we're happy to go. Oh, he's online. He's online.
Oh, very good. Who is it online?
Yes, I'm here. Hello.
Sure. Go ahead and stick your name and, and tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm Derek Larkham. I'm the secretary for Franklin County Honors. We handle the Veterans Day parade, some of the celebrations around Veterans Day and most recently Memorial Day.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you for that. What, I see your request is for the same amount. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Now, this is not part of the banner program. That's a separate program, right?
We do handle the banners, but the money would not go towards that. What we're looking to do is update our static displays that are put up in the park. Currently, we've got aging mannequins. We'd like to replace them with more sleek silhouettes, easy to store, safer to put up. It'd be a slow process changing out a few each year, but this would work towards that.
So even mannequins, even mannequins age? I thought maybe they just went on and on forever, but it's good to hear. I'm in good company. But anyway, well, listen, let me tell you about your parade. I think Ottawa has a fantastic parade every year. Not every community has one. There's just really few in Kansas. I don't know if you know how many parades are done on Veterans Day, but I just want to say what a great parade for our little community you guys put on every year. And this is a well-invested investment in you guys to do this again. So thank you very much for your service to that. And I see no problem with leaving this on our budget plan. Any other questions?
I would agree. I think it's great. You go down to City Park around Veterans Day and it's awesomely eerie. You know, I got to take an eight-year-old down there this year for the first time and it was, it's really cool because you really kind of feel some of that weight with the displays that are set up. And I think this would be an awesome use of funds.
I always love seeing the pictures and it really does make you proud of being American during that time. If not at all times, but certainly it's a great show of support.
Right. All right. Well, thanks for being online. If you want to continue to watch, you're welcome to, but you don't have to now. So you're clear to go if you want.
Thank you.
We are taking attendance, though, right?
We're going to put a condition on that $1,000 now. Melanie, go right ahead. What's next?
All right, our next slide or... I have to know where to point it. Apparently, it's not at the screen. I knew that. So our city band allocation, the 2025 request is for $5,215. That's $350 over last year's request. And the application sites of the 350 is specifically for a new banner in City Park. And so I know that the applicant is typically Merle Morty and I don't know if,
Tom and Merle.
Yes, and if there's anyone else that, that would be available for questions as well, so.
Melanie, well, Dr. Morty and Mr. Shumpel are on their way up, which we appreciate what they do with the city band, certainly. In 2021, due to COVID, I'm assuming, we, did we not allocate money? Or did we allocate money and it just wasn't utilized?
Commissioner Kayla, to answer your question, it, it was awarded for that year. It just wasn't distributed because of COVID and they didn't have their activities. And it stayed in the fund. It wasn't allocated or appropriated to them. For them to hold on to, it was kept on our side.
Okay.
Thank you.
Either one of you, if you can answer the question, for some folks who may not know how often the city band plays and then about how many participants view the city band, could you kind of give us some of those numbers roughly?
My wife takes the attendance and it ranges from 95 or 100 up to 150 or so. And then, of course, Fourth of July concert is impossible to count because we're in forest parks and they're spread all over the place. We have 45 members now.
The band member, that varies, but somewhere about 45 up to 55, something like that.
And about how many shows?
Pardon?
How many times do you play?
Oh, okay. We're, it's a total of about six concerts. We started already on May 28 and our last concert's in the middle of July.
So upwards of 1,000 people watch these, the bands play every?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And remind us again, this on Tuesday nights?
Tuesday nights, 7:30.
7:30. Very good.
There was a possibility of inclement weather, so last night, we had the concert in our memorial auditorium.
Oh, good.
Which worked out really well because as we ended, we, and we started going back to our cars, it was sprinkling. And we had tympanis on stage and we wouldn't have been able to move those tympanis very fast if we had had those outside.
I think we had 111 last night, 95 last week.
Very good. And the splash pad, that work out okay? I think that shuts down at 7 o'clock.
That seems to have taken care of the problem right now.
Good to hear. All right. Great, gentlemen. All right.
I think it's great. Just, I want to highlight, just reading here, that years of operation, that it's been since 1900. And I think that's just amazing that it's still going, still having, you know, concerts.
And we've got documentation of a, a city band of some sort in Ottawa in 1865. We were organized in, what, 1850-something? So we've been, we've had a band for a long time.
Tom wrote up some history about the band and presented it to a group in Ottawa recently.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing. It's not always been called the city band. They've, the conductors had their name on the band, but it was, it's been continuous since at least 1900.
And as you know, it's volunteers, because the band members are not paid. It's just the conductor and then the librarian, basically.
That's great. Awesome. Fantastic.
We appreciate your love of music and your willingness to share that with citizens.
We invite you all to come.
We enjoy playing.
Well, thanks very much, gentlemen.
Last night, we had a guest conductor. He wrote two pieces and the one was dedicated to auto city band and performed for the first time last night.
I love it.
And I didn't think about putting it on Facebook page. We have one and other coming up, so I'll try to remember to put it on our Facebook page to let the people know.
Mr. Mark Paquette, our conductor, has met these guys, plays with some of them in different organizations and invited them to come and play with us. And one of them said, I just finished a piece. Do you think you'd be interested in playing it? Well, what are you going to say? No?
So we had that for the first time last night.
So that's the one that we played for the very first time last night.
Dr. Morty, what instrument do you play?
Tuba.
And Tom?
I play trombone.
Okay. Yes. Great. Thank you.
Is that it? No questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your support.
Appreciate. Glad to. Thank you for coming tonight.
All right, our next organization is Franklin County Development Council and Paul Bean's here to answer questions of you. The 2025 request is the 67,594. It matches the, the amount that was allocated in 2024. This is a three-way split between Ottawa, Franklin County and the membership dues that they collect as an organization. And the allocation amount for FCDC has had a total increase from 2014 to 2024 of 12.65% or $7,593. And with that, he's available for questions.
Paul Bean, what instrument do you play?
You don't want me to play any instrument.
You've been marked clear.
Mr. Bean?
Yes, sir.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you, sir?
Good, good. Since I'm not part of FCDC anymore, since we did our change on, on the groups that we're now with, can you update me on how your memberships are going?
Memberships are right at 90 on the private sector side. So that's, we had exponential growth first three or four years and then it's plateauing at this point, so, which we expected. But yeah, we've been pretty consistent. Just got a new member today, as a matter of fact. So we continue to grow a little bit, but not at the rate we were.
Thank you.
I just got an email from you today about the new cold storage facility. I guess that the, where was that located? I, I read it.
It's up in, up in Dulles, I mean Johnson.
Okay.
Yeah, Johnson County.
I know that's always more competition out there than we ever anticipated, I suppose.
I was just driving through there Monday, I think it was. And they have built a significant square footage space of existing buildings. And so that's one of our challenges is we don't have an existing building, but there's a lot of them up. They, they've overbuilt, in my opinion. But that hurts us because the ones that want an existing building, there's a little bit of competition up, up north getting that business because they've got so many big, big, big buildings that are empty. And that's the other challenge is when I talk to developers about coming down here and looking at one, they're like, well, we got a lot of inventory up north. We don't want to build one right now in Ottawa.
But we know we're not trying to compete with them anyway. We can't. I mean, with what they have to offer, we're trying to compete with, you know, down south, maybe, you know, those areas than, than certainly what the Johnson counties can offer.
Yeah, we, we compete with the Johnson County, but unfortunately, the logistics of it impact what we're competing against, I guess, is, you know, in some form. So it's, it makes it tough for us because we're a little further out and we don't have the building. And, but yeah, as far as some of the, some of the things they do up there, there's no way we'd want to even look at doing. It wouldn't be fair to our taxpayers.
Just a reminder, everybody, to our North Industrial Park had began, I'm not sure what year, but the buildings didn't start there until, was it like 10 years after?
It's 10 to 15 years later.
After it was purchased.
Before the first building went in. We still have space out there that's, you know, unfortunately, you know, when we talk about the North Industrial Park, the problem is that the industries need more space than maybe they did when that park was designed. So it doesn't lay out very well for current prospects. You know, every now and then, I'll get one that'll say, you know, oh, we just need five or 10 acres. And so, well, we might be able to squeeze something in up there. But very rarely do we get anything that, that North Park could accommodate from the industrial basis. And that might be something, you know, that we need to think about is do we want to try a different marketing approach for the North Park for some other types of business? That's something to think about. We, we are currently going through a process at FCDC of reviewing and, and looking at a new strategic plan to carry us from 2025 to 2030. And so these are the types of conversations that we're going to be having and get that formulated so that January 1, we've, we've kind of got a new map.
Good. Any more questions with Paul?
Along with that, just kind of reading through about, you know, the, the leadership on Franklin County workforce and community growth initiatives, do you do much in terms of trying to kind of recruit residential developers instead of, you know, as much commercial for proximity park, you know, housing apartments, those types of things?
Yeah, I have frequent conversations with developers, housing developers. There, you know, right now, I think, as you, as you know, you're in, you're in, in some of that business is, is with the interest rates. That's, they're a little hesitant again to come this far south. They're developing things up in Johnson and turning those pretty rapidly. But there's still a hesitancy to come this far down the interstate. We're seeing obviously a lot of, a lot of construction currently in Wellsville, so it's hitting Franklin County. But it's not, I'd say the wave's not as strong 30 miles, 20 miles further down the interstate than it is right now in Wellsville.
And is that in Wellsville, out, kind of outside money, investor money?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And those are some of the folks I've, I've had discussions with. In fact, I've got a lunch in, in a week or two with another housing developer up in the city. So I frequently have those conversations. So if nothing else, they know we're here and we're open for business. But we just haven't found one that's ready to have a serious conversation, I should say.
Thank you. And then can you just quickly hit on the e-community? How much, dollar amount ballpark has been infused into the community?
I've been real excited about that. In, in partnership with our local banks, we've put close to 600,000 into the local business community. In, in partnership with our local banks, uh, we've put close to six-hundred thousand into the local business community. Um, all of the projects, with the exception of one, have been in Ottawa. And, uh, so we've got, uh, several new businesses, uh, as a result of the e-community in downtown. Uh, we've got a couple that have expanded or moved and expanded, uh, but they're downtown. And, uh, so I've been real pleased with, with that program. Unfortunately, uh, we used to, it's through Network Kansas and we used to get grant money from the Patterson Foundation so we could do a grant and a loan. Patterson's moved on to other things and so we don't have the grants anymore, but we still have the, the loans, uh, and, uh, we've had some great partnerships with the local banks and, um, the, all of those, uh, businesses, uh, they're doing really, really well right now, so I'm very, very proud of the impact that e-community's had. I think that's been a, a game changer for us at the local level.
And to clarify, e-community doesn't have to just be, it's not e as in terms of on the internet, e-commerce.
Right, entrepreneur.
You kind of.
Yeah, that's true.
It's something geared towards web.
Yeah.
And it's open for anyone.
It's open for entrepreneurship, that's exactly right, that's what that's about. And, uh, that's a key piece to growth in a rural community is entrepreneurship. Um, that's how you, you know, we, your business grows through small business, your community grows through small business. Now, you want to get a big industry and that's a nice boost, but your consistency is your folks downtown and your small businesses are really, to me, what makes your city go. Um, obviously, a big employer is a great asset and I'll never say it is not, and it's not, don't everyone hear anybody think I say I don't want them, because we do. But, uh, I think it's just, and, and as a result, we've kind of shifted, you know, before I came, uh, FCDC was really just focused on industry and so we've spent a lot of focus on, uh, small business and entrepreneurship and workforce and trying to get some housing and even trying to get childcare. But hopefully I'll have better news on that someday than I have so far, especially on childcare.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Well, Paul, I've been reading articles about different parts of Kansas, I think Western Kansas, Scotts City particularly, lost a meatpacking plant, lost a lot of employees. Southeast Kansas is struggling, uh, there's just many areas that are, uh, I guess I want to say unfortunate where you live and a good location where we are and we have a good, strong workforce and companies are doing well here. It, it's just, uh, you don't have to look very far to see some people having a lot of problems, I'm just glad that we're not in that discussion.
No, that's, that's exactly right. We, we have a ton to offer because of our location, but on the flip side of that too is, is we're very fortunate because we have industry, you know, it's a, it's a problem, but it's a good problem. We have a couple of our industries in North Park that would love to expand, but we don't have the workforce, but they do have the work, uh, if we could get the workforce. So I'm not aware of any industries that are, that are struggling, uh, in our community. Um, all of them have ups and downs, but I'm not aware of any of them that are, are really struggling. Um, I think the market's good and now that the state's evidently gonna pass the legislature for the chiefs, that we'll just put them out at Proximity Park and go from there.
So does the, so how do you feel about the huge investment that the Walmart DC's making with the automation? Is that gonna help with some of that, uh, workforce need?
I think, I think it could help a little bit. I've, I've been in contact with the leadership at Walmart, you know, probably six or seven months ago, just to talk about what's, what do we need to be planning for? You know, are you gonna lay off a bunch of people and we need to bring in and train and do that? And they said, no, that's not the plan at all. In fact, it'd be, uh, probably through attrition and pretty minimal. Um, and the jobs that it are creating are much higher paying jobs and so far they're able to fill those from within, which is great. So they're not, they're not losing people. Um, however, you're gonna, the national trend in industry is you are moving to automation, they're all gonna do it. And that, that was, they were headed that way and it really was accelerated through COVID because this machine doesn't have to take fifteen days off or, and wear a mask and be tested and they don't have childcare problems and on and on and on. So you will see an impact continue and, and I think that'll, you know, the net, I mean, I think it'd be foolish to think the net is gonna be fewer employees in that particular location, uh, which could help us in other locations and other jobs. I think the key to that, and this is something we're, we're having discussions on through the Heartland Works, is how do we plug in with the businesses to do retraining? Uh, so people can move from one to the other or move up in the company that they're in based upon, okay. And this really starts to come into play with artificial intelligence. That, the robotics is really impacting your blue collar and lower paying jobs. Your AI is gonna impact your, your white collar and your higher paying job. So working on training and, and understanding the dynamics at play in the next five to ten years of, okay, so that job maybe isn't what it used to be because AI is doing a bunch of it, but there's a new job that comes up right beside that, that takes a human being. And so what's that skill set and how do we retrain and how do we get them ready and how do we do that in the high schools? And, you know, I, I've, I'm glad I'm not twenty-five and just figuring, just starting out, because how do you figure with the way the world's changing with AI, how do we train our fifth graders to be ready when they're eighteen? I, I don't know, because it's, um, the conference I went to, our, our institutional knowledge as a society, um, in eighteen-hundred, it changed every hundred, it doubled every hundred years. In nineteen-hundred, it doubled every fifty years. In twenty-twenty, it doubled every twelve hours. So, um, everything's changing so rapidly that that's a challenge for workforce, it's a challenge for education. Um, certification programs used to, you know, if you could go through in eighteen to twenty-four months, that was a good program. Industry now says we need it in six to eight months. So we have a lot of, a lot of challenges in workforce development and retraining and that's where I'm spending a lot of time studying and trying to figure out what's, how do we play into that and help our existing industry? And then I think if we're good at that or at least show that we address it at some level, that's gonna help us attract new industry as well.
What's around the corner, we don't know, yeah.
It's pretty challenging.
Yeah, I can see your point there. Any more questions with Paul? All right, thanks, Paul.
Thank you for your support, I really appreciate it.
You bet.
All right, Ottawa Main Street Association is the next agency to discuss and the twenty-twenty-five request is fifty-three thousand two-hundred-and-sixty dollars, which is an increase of twenty-one thousand two-sixty over the twenty-twenty-four allocation. And in the, um, application, it, it states that the requested increase in funding will support the expansion of their administrative and operational capacity, enhancing its ability to develop programs, engage the community and support the downtown businesses effectively. And I know that Sarah offers here as well as, um, maybe others in her organization to be able to answer your questions.
I left it high for you.
Good afternoon. Oftentimes I come in and I have to raise it back up.
You're okay, good. Go right ahead, Sarah.
Lower down. Oh, thought he was telling me to lower down.
I'm gonna go first. My name's Wendy Lee and I'm the, uh, acting president. I was, I'm the vice president by election, but, uh, our president was, had to change out of the position. Um, thanks first for allowing us to be here and we are happy to answer any questions and we do want to say we appreciate the support of the city because as you know, we reformed recently and that was really at your direction. And, and I've been, was with the city long enough to know that actually there would be no Main Street where there are no city direction years ago in a strategic plan. So thank you and your predecessors because we wouldn't be here without you. We did want to, we do want to, we can tell you some things. Um, part of the reason there's two of us is because one of the main things about our increase was to move the position of the director from a part-time position to a full-time. And we didn't think it was fair for Sarah to be the one presenting that because that is not her idea, it is our board decision and recommendation. And as such, it would seem a little odd for her to be asking that. And so we are both here to answer questions because there may be some direct programmatic questions that she can answer. Uh, and I am here to talk specifically about why we, why we believe that that is important. And then I would also note that a big number of our board members are here, so if they'll all give you a little wave so you can see how many also spent their time tonight, uh, to come and endorse our application. We also have prepared some letters of, uh, support for the request to be increased. We are very clear that it is a significant increase, we, we fully understand that. Um, but we, we still believe we wanted to make that request and tell you why.
Sure. I guess I thought all along you were, you were full-time already, but I guess you probably were in some sense, but weren't paid for it, so maybe it's a mystery.
Her contract says part-time, mayor.
Part-time.
Uh, she's working a lot of volunteer time.
That's what it sounds like to me and I know when you put together the Piccadilly auction, then you must have been on eighty hours a week that week before, I'm less, I'm guessing, but I didn't realize your position was part-time until we read this part. But, uh, that's, that's, you've done a good job with what you had to work with, no doubt about it, Sarah. Uh, are, I guess I'll ask you too, are there any kind of grant opportunities to help with this program or would tell us?
Well, so let me tell you what, how we are proposing our upcoming financials. That will probably maybe cover a little bit of that. Um, so when we had our board retreat in January, we made a couple of, at the time, we weren't even talking about making an increase request to the city. What we did challenge ourselves to do, uh, our annual, um, recruitment for affiliates is in June, so we're in the middle of that now. We'll talk to you more about that later. Um, but the, uh, our challenge to ourselves was to double the number of people who are affiliates. We're currently at fifty-six, so our goal to ourselves is to get over a hundred. Okay? Uh, and we have already started the process and we've redeveloped what it is we're offering to our affiliates so that they can see the value in that. And, and last year we did, we spent some time getting affiliates, but we really, as you recall, we're still reforming and we couldn't articulate in a lot of ways what they were going to get from that. Um, in addition to that, one of the people that I talked to about affiliates, I said, even as a community member, there are benefits to the wider community and you might consider joining for that reason, not, not the fact that you could get a loan through IWW or you could get promotion through social media, but because of the things we're doing for the community. So when we even submitted the budget to you, we hadn't yet to have our major fundraiser. And in that fundraiser, as you mentioned, the Piccadilly, Sarah and the promotions team and the volunteers, we netted over fifteen thousand. Now, we did not know that was coming and we don't know if we can do it again, we sure hope we can. Um, but we are so incredibly blessed and thankful that people came, it was a well-attended event, it's a first-time event. And so we're still learning what can we do, but it is our commitment to try and have, similar to what Paul and FCDC does, have a balanced approach to how we raise the funds to do what we're trying to do. We don't intend for it to be a completely city-funded function, um, but we are, of course, geographically the only one that is only within and in fact, on our mapping is only downtown.
And I recognize too, as we promote our downtown, uh, sales taxes are generated and we do benefit from that at the same time. So I realize it comes back to us to a certain degree as well, but that's always a good thing to promote downtown. I know the downtown businesses too, as far as dues go, I guess you're doing, well, if you knew, you call them affiliates, not members, or, okay.
Right.
And so I guess the dues are coming in, are, are people delinquent or how's that working out for you there?
No, so we, we do our affiliates in June and they pay, although with our new rates, because we did increase them. So we asked them to invest at a higher level as well. Uh, and we did offer for the lowest rated one that they could pay quarterly, because we do understand that some businesses, this is a big ask.
Oh, yeah.
No question about that. We are dependent on them, but we are also benefiting them. So we are asking them to also increase their investment. So for our low level for businesses, a twenty, two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar ask, high levels, a thousand annually. And they pay it then, like, in June. Or we actually put in a little bonus if they'll pay for it in June and they're doing the, they can get it for two-twenty-five. So a little, little sales ad there for you in case anybody out there's listening. Uh, but our primary goal was to get Sarah to a full-time status. Uh, and the difference that we see, there's a lot of things we believe can be improved, but one of the most significant is that we could become an accredited Main Street. Without a full-time director, you cannot do that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and that is the one barrier to our being qualified. Everything else we're doing, everything else they've asked, everything else that we're required to do, both at the state and, and national level. It's just that we don't have a full-time director. And it may take us several years to get to, we understand that, but we wanted to start by telling you clearly why we're going there and what we think we can do for that.
So the accredited, is that, I mean, some businesses, we call thirty-two hours full-time, but they're saying forty on, on their.
Mm-hmm, it is forty. Um, along with that comes more grant opportunities for us as well as other things that are open to the community trainings. Um, and even right now, the state level is letting us in, they know that we've been in a transition. Um, but even as far as like our IWW funds could be in jeopardy, um, moving forward if we're not establishing that full-time.
Okay, very good.
As well as the other grants that, uh, for example, we just had one that was closed for upper level living that was specifically only for, uh, Kansas Main Streets. And we would have been knocked out of the running completely on that one, um, as well as some others that are already established out there. We are learning that, um, on the grants that are coming out, if they're coming out from the state level, most of the time that there is something on there saying and asking if you are a Main Street community and if you are a Main Street community, then it gives you a one-up in the table of.
They're scoring higher, scoring higher.
Scoring higher.
Okay, very good.
We see a lot of advantages besides the ones that you've already been familiar with as far as grants go. Uh, and, uh, we also know, you know, we have, as an organization, been getting thirty thousand or a, a little less for ten years. The last two years it looks like a tire, but that was the trade for not doing the multi by you, but by us. Um, so we still kind of consider that a net thirty, but thirty-two is still a great number, we'll take that. But we did want to at least point out that we have been a very constant rate for that time. And there was one year too that we didn't get any funding because the organization was suffering. Um, I would offer too that we have a very, very active board, um, who have really gotten very passionate about what they're doing. And, um, we're, we're thrilled, but we are, we have an event tomorrow night. I know some of you have other plans, because I'll be with you, but there is an event tomorrow night, um, because we're recruiting volunteers because we know that we need to be able to do all the things that we've outlined for ourselves, we need more people.
Very good.
As well as a full-time director.
That's right. And so tell me, so Sarah, on, you'd be working more hours and so can you tell me some other, uh, objectives or things you want to accomplish for Main Street now that you're gonna be, if you do get a full-time position?
It would make it to where we could do more events, to be honest. Um, I'm being approached by partnering to do things and more events. I am personally just maxed out at the point and being told, you know, I'm at my hours. It's hard, hard to turn away and, um, I mean, like you said, you didn't realize that I was at part-time.
Yeah.
Business owners don't either. So them seeing like, hey, I can't do this, I'm not an office operator yet over my hours. Um, when looking back, they're like, well, but I'm an affiliate, but you see what I'm saying? So it's hard to, um, not say we, you want to keep growing and doing better, but we're also kind of limited on our own. Um, we've made huge growth in the last year, even in the last six months. And, um, part of that is because of our partnerships, only, not only with the partnership with you guys, but also the partnership with FCDC, the Chamber, the library, really focusing and trying to build those partnerships, whether it be working with Paul to pull, um, businesses downtown with those e-community loans, um, doing court, events together with the Chamber or with the library, just really focusing on those has actually helped everybody, I believe.
And, and I would offer too that one of the things we determined last year was we moved back to the Chamber, we, we looked at cutting expenses too. So this isn't all about trying to raise the revenue, it is also about what could we do to manage our expenses better? And we, we seek every opportunity to do that as well. Um, and I know that, it was mentioned earlier, we're one of the organizations that does not currently do an audit, we have not had the cash flow to do that.
I understand it. And to clarify, Mayor Skidmore asked a minute ago about moving to full-time, is this request to get you to full-time status?
Yes. That request would fully fund the position to full-time plus make sure we have our rent. Um, and we will, we can, you know, we will be happy to answer questions or see what you can do too, because I, we also understand the budget constraints.
Sure. And you, you had mentioned IWW funds, can you kind of clarify what those are?
So it's, IWW stands for incentive without walls. It is a state program through the state Main Street that we were awarded, um, years ago and we were able to hold on to. Um, it is a loan process that we, if a business comes and approaches us and wants to do a facade fixture or a new business coming in, um, but they need a little bit extra of a loan or cash to, um, do a product new line or something like that, or open a brand-new business because it takes a lot or, you know, a facade update to fix a building. These are zero percent interest loans, seven years, and they can take twenty thousand. Um, previously in our reorganization, we have, now currently have everybody in good standing on those. Um, and we have one that we've loaned out this year and two more that are currently pending, um, that will be going before the board. Um, those help businesses come in, they help businesses that are here to stay established, bring in new product and essentially bring in more, uh, money to the community. It also is re-evolving, so as it's paid back, we collect the money and then we can loan it back out to somebody else.
Right. Any other questions?
Sarah, um, Main Street's come a long way. Um, just a few years ago, I was, uh, worried that it wouldn't even be in existence, quite honestly, and rightfully so, quite honestly, at that point. Um, but you and your board have done a wonderful job to get it to where it is today. Um, have you had any conversations with the county about asking for any money?
That's one of the things I failed to mention. We, we actually made notes for ourselves, Commissioner, thanks for that question. Uh, in fact, three times we've been. In fact, three times, we've been funded by county tourism dollars to do some things. We've received forty-one hundred dollars in the last year for specific items. In fact, they helped us update our website, which I hope you've been on to see. It's much, 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 much better. And it, and it is, offers a lot more services to our affiliates as well. Secondly, they helped us with the marketing for the disc golf event. And what was the third one?
The third one is the tourism conference.
That's right.
So the tourism conference was in alignment with my quarterly conference. And whenever I researched it, we had nobody in the county going for Franklin County because we don't have a focus. And so when I approached them, they were willing to pay for me to go and attend, because it obviously was not in our budget. But, and it was beneficial. I've made a lot of connections through there. One of those being, I don't know if you're familiar with the Sunflower Summers program. It is free to community, to families in the state of Kansas that have elementary age or school-aged children. And I was able to get listed on there, the, sorry, the movie theater, the depot, and the trails. It makes it to where anybody in the state of Kansas can use the app and attend those for free, but then those places get paid. So if somebody checks in to the movie theater, they get to go for free, them and a child and adult. So for my family, we all four would be able to go, but that business then gets paid through tourism.
And we didn't have any of those before Sarah entry. We didn't have any listed. So when, when people around the state are looking for their day trip things, Ottawa wasn't necessarily going to be on that list.
Even the trails, even though they're already essentially free to do, it is, it just listed them on there. There are some requirements that have to go with it, but just having something listed on there. And even it's, I mean, Ottawa Franklin County residents can still use those. And our businesses would then get paid for them going to visit that.
Well, I'm, I'm super excited to hear that they've made contributions. I, I hopefully they see the, the wealth that, the revenue that Main Street, that you, yourself, you know, you guys bring to the city of Ottawa. And then certainly that, that matriculates down to, you know, what the, what the county brings in for tax dollars. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that. I was reading through some of your letters of recommendations that you have here. And one of them's for a individual who may be running for county commissioner. I was going to say that if they weren't contributing some of that, that maybe that commissioner could certainly get that seat and pass the, the desire that they have for your organization on to that, that board.
We will continue to seek resources, believe me. But, but yes, we, we were grateful for what they've done, because they hadn't, they are not a member, but they are supporting. And in fact, for example, the website was, was very key for us, because we were really struggling when we needed to do that. And we'd made the vote, but we all knew that literally took us our cash flow, our cash down to a not sustainable place. So receiving was very critical, timing-wise, so.
Well, you've done a great job. I know, yeah, several years ago, as Commissioner Crowley mentioned about the Main Street was really struggling. Many directors came and went, and it was a challenge there to kind of keep the consistency going. This may seem like a strange question, but if we approved this and you're able to secure some grants to help pay for it next year, might your request be less next year? And that's hard to answer.
So we are going to be like, pray pause on this. There won't be grants for payroll. What we will commit to you to do is we will look very hard at what we're doing in our affiliate rates, who else are sponsoring us, as well as our fundraiser. And yes, then it may be that because by that point, we have a better handle on our total cash flow, that we could reduce it.
Or Sarah could be a part-time dog catcher.
Well, and part of that, I caught a mouse in the office the other day, if it helps. I don't know.
She's got experience.
I did rescue and help out the Chamber this morning with the mouse. But I would say that, you mentioned that we've come a long way, and we have come a long way. But with coming with that, we've also inherited what came with that. So there's some debt that came with that. So there's times where I think, man, did we just get caught up and then it'd be surprise? So as much as we're being mindful that we have had things that were out of our control that we've played catch-up on, as I would call it.
Well, and I think your idea about having more events, that's going to generate more revenue too. So I think you got the great concept, great idea.
And common consumption hopefully is one of those huge generators.
Right, for all of us, right? That was one of the things that we wanted to say is she could maybe potentially be doing more of those kinds of things, learning from the other cities and bringing it home. And then it benefits the business, it benefits the tax base, it benefits the alcohol taxes, and then maybe we can continue to collect funds from all those beneficiaries, so.
And Sarah, do you, unlike these events, work kind of directly with the tourism department in, in getting information out and anything about those?
I do send them information. We're very limited on what is being, and quite honestly, what is being focused on, on tourism in the community. We have so much potential, but it's not being highlighted. Main Street and tourism does overlap a lot, you know, that's the goal of putting on events and things like that. And so I, there is communication there and we form partnerships and there's definitely able to have communication. But unfortunately, there's just not a real focus right now on tourism.
And Franklin County Tourism Department is, is located where and who's running that department right now?
I believe the person I've been in contact with is, it's like a small portion of her job duties. It's not mainly tourism, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. You have other questions on Main Street? Good presentation.
Thank you very much for your support.
You bet you. Thank you.
All right. Our next activity for the community is the Ottawa fireworks piece. And the twenty-twenty-five request is, is for four thousand dollars, which is a five-hundred-dollar increase over their twenty-twenty-four allocation. And when I was able to talk with Ryland about what, what should I highlight for this request in here? And we, our conversation centered around the cost of the fireworks has increased by sixteen percent over the previous year, resulting in an increased request for both the city and the county for an additional five-hundred dollars. The county has committed the additional five-hundred, resulting in a twenty-twenty-five contribution of seventeen-hundred dollars from the county. The committee is going to continue to work and still needs to collect donations of between twenty-five-hundred and three-thousand to complete the funding for the fireworks show for twenty-twenty-five. And with that, Ryland is available for your questions.
I guess the fireworks been ordered already, but I guess we'll be making sure that's.
Yes, sir. Yeah, absolutely. Fireworks have been ordered and that will be ready to shoot come July fourth, with the great help of the Chautauqua Festival Committee and the help of city employees as well. It's a great partnership, the Fourth of July celebration each year.
And the county has contributed in the past, it looks like, then, right? If it was increases five-hundred, so they've done.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was good to hear that too. So, very good. Any more questions on fireworks?
As long as you can bring the weather we had two years ago when it was on Labor Day. That was a little bit, yeah, if you can bring that.
Yeah, no kidding. Labor Day weather on July fourth. Work on that.
Ryland, good job.
Any other questions on fireworks? We're good?
All right. Appreciate your support.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. Our next agency is, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Layton Center. And the twenty-five request is twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars, which is an increase of fifteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-one dollars over the awarded twenty-twenty-four allocation. The application cites measurable outcomes with the funding request for three items, which is the provision of clinical oversight to our crisis co-responder, participation in other events or movements in the community, I guess, the homeless coalition, Ottawa Leadership Panel and the CIT meetings. And then the lease of a new vehicle for one year to be used for client transportation. And Leslie Bjork is here for, with, for questions.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Tell us a little bit about the increase, how you plan to use that specifically and how, why we should do it for you.
Excellent. Happy to do so. The funding request from ELC this year carried over all of the items from our previous year's requests, but we added one new item. And the difference in the budget request for this year is that new item. So the lease of the Kia vehicle is the addition to the budget request this year. ELC has had incredible growth over the last year. So I'm very honored and excited to say we, we served over seventeen-hundred members of this community last year. We've been working very hard toward a special certification in a CCBHC model of care. And because of that model of care, we've done huge enhancements to programming and services over the past year. So you'll see in the packet some of the new programs and services we've added over this year. And I can share some of those with you all if you'd like to hear more about any of those programs. But the vehicle is something that helps us to ensure that clients who are in need of our service can access those services. As you might be aware, we serve a, a good proportion of individuals who live at the poverty level. Last year, we served about twelve percent of our, our entire population served from the Ottawa community was making a household family income of under twelve thousand dollars per year. When that's the kind of financial situation that our consumers are looking at, transportation becomes a major issue. So we oftentimes are trying to assist. We are a Medicaid transport provider in the community. And we also transport individual clients, particularly youth, to medically necessary services. One example of that is we launched two weeks ago our popular summer program for youth. It's a psychosocial treatment program for youth. And to make that program work, transporting the kids into the center and back home again is an important part of the program. So we made a huge effort in this last year to improve our vehicle fleet and to bring it up to modern standards. We are slowly transitioning over to leased vehicles. And so this would be an example of one of those vehicles that we've included in our request this year.
So can you give us a kind of a specific example of how the vehicle would be used?
Certainly. Yeah, so a good example would be our summer programming that launched a couple of weeks ago. In the mornings, our staff go and pick up youth from their homes when their parent is not able to drive them, or their guardian, I should say, is not able to drive them into the center. So we'll head out and pick them up in the morning. They participate in treatment programming through most of the day. Several days a week, we build in outings to be able to practice good skills and behaviors and just to have some fun with the youth who are engaged in the program. And so transportation of those events is needed. Maybe that's, you know, bringing everybody out to the splash pad or other types of things that the youth might find entertaining and engaging and allow us to practice skills. So getting out there in the middle of the day to those events is part of why we need vehicles and then taking folks home at the end of the day.
So it's like a minivan hold many, several people or more?
That's correct. This particular vehicle is a minivan. And so those are highly preferred for the summer programming. We transport a lot of youth at, at one time.
Familiar with that car?
It looks like a really large SUV.
Yeah, good. Okay.
And Leslie, going back just a second, you said it was about twelve percent, that was under twelve thousand dollars annual income?
And that's a household family income, yes. Yeah, the, the vast majority of individuals that we serve have either no insurance or Medicaid as a payer. We do serve folks of all ages, all types, all payer sources. We serve folks with commercial insurance as well. But we specialize, you know, we, we are the safety net providers. The Community Mental Health Center, we're the safety net for those folks who can't afford the services that they require.
And mental health needs is not a respecter of persons. It didn't matter who you are, what your age is or your financial ability. It affects everybody, so.
Mayor, I appreciate that. The latest stats tell us that about twenty-two percent of individuals per year will be diagnosed with a mental health condition. That only accounts for adults and that only accounts for mental health, not substance use disorder conditions. So we know that need is much higher than twenty-two percent. In the last year, we probably served about twelve percent of the Ottawa population.
Okay, very good. Just following along that with the twenty-two percent or so of mental health and then also substance abuse, would you say as the crisis co-responder, I know you're not asking for an increase in, you kind of said those items. Is that working well? Is that going well with the, you know, with the police department? You know, in terms of their funding, their time allocation that you're seeing?
I think it's a hugely successful program. I, you know, if you're interested, I would invite Chief Wayne Garner to come in as well. But I think it's been an incredibly great partnership. And the work that that co-responder is doing is making a huge impact in the community. I see data each month about the number of individuals that they've engaged in outreach in the community. And a very large proportion of those folks do have some kind of behavioral health condition. That's a great point of opportunity for us to make referrals into care. And so I think what we're seeing in the big picture is when our co-responder, who's embedded in that policing unit, when they can get out, meet with individuals in person, when they're in that crisis point, get them referred over to ELC, wherever their place of choice is for that treatment, they tend to not cycle much through a crisis situation. So I think it's helping to save enough time from our enforcement office. I think it's helping our community to get the health that they need. And incredibly excited and satisfied with the program.
Awesome. Could you give just a, kind of an elevator speech real quick for someone who's listening and unfamiliar? What is a crisis co-responder? What, what is that? What do they do?
Great. This is a trained specialist who, they are trained in behavioral health. And our co-responder, this is a bachelor's level case manager position. And so this individual is trained to be able to identify crises, to de-escalate crises, to help individuals to coordinate resources and services for like a whole-person care. Because sometimes when a person has a mental illness, they also can't afford to eat or they can't afford to, they don't have a social situation. So our folks are helping to attend to all of those things. So the crisis co-responder is embedded in the police, community policing unit. So when our police respond to a situation and they identify a behavioral health concern or need, they ensure that our co-responder is, is safely accompanying that unit into the home or the community location. And at which point they're able to engage with the individual, help de-escalate the situation and, and get them the help that they need.
Thank you.
That was probably longer than elevator speech.
Leslie, I know, of course, we're dealing with Ottawa taxpayers' money and the question may come up to us, is will this vehicle be used if we approve this for the city of Ottawa proper only, or how will that?
Excellent question. This particular vehicle, we would dedicate to the Ottawa community. So it would be housed at our Eisenhower facility. It may also be used at our Fifteenth Street location here in town. Each of those program facility locations serve a slightly different population. But it would be housed here in Ottawa and used exclusively in this community.
You know, you serve Miami County too.
That is correct. Yeah. We, we have a large fleet of vehicles. And again, we're trying to update over time in a strategic way that fleet. And so this would be an important part of a larger fleet for us.
Leslie, thank you for being here. And I, I appreciate the fact that you brought up the hard work that the Elizabeth Layton Center is doing to actually change their model. And it's not just something that happens overnight. And it's something that really, Elizabeth Layton Center has been working on diligently to change the model and how service is happening to individuals who may need care and support. So I wonder if you could give just a, a quick little overview on that, on CC, on CCHBC. I think I might have gotten that wrong, but I not, not, not have. I don't know. We'll see. And then tell us about, is there, within that new model, are there reimbursement dollars available for transportation and things that you're speaking about?
Two great questions. Commissioner, thank you for this question. I am really excited about the CCBHC model. This acronym stands for Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. And it's a federal best-practice model of care. The state of Kansas created a statute a couple of years ago that allowed us to apply to become a CCBHC model of care. In July of last year, we received provisional certification. And we've been working for really the past eighteen months to meet all of the bells and whistles and checkmarks for what it means to be a CCBHC. It's a huge list of requirements. But the requirements are all there because the model really helps to elevate access to care. It helps to ensure quality of care. And it helps to make sure that care is well-coordinated for whole-person needs. So this is the model. Access, coordination, and quality are kind of the leg of the stool of the model. And what that translates to kind of for us in this community are new programs and services. So there are things like, we now have same-day access to care, meaning that if anyone would like to begin services with ELC, we have walk-in times any day that you can come and start that service rather than having to wait and schedule something a couple of weeks out. We have a new medication management program that allows more efficient care and better access to the psychiatric medications that folks need. We've, we've built intensive substance use disorder outpatient treatment services. So an individual can now receive up to twenty hours of outpatient substance use care here in this community and not have to go to Lawrence, not have to go to Johnson County. We've built medically assisted treatment services. This is an evidence-based practice for opioid and alcohol use disorders, which are a problem in our community. These are just a small sampling. I could probably keep going for an hour on the new programs and services. But the bottom line is it's going to improve the care for behavioral health in this community. The payment system changes for a CCBHC model of care. So as you've mentioned, one of the big advantages for centers to go through all of these requirements and hoops, in addition to offering better care, is the Medicaid rate for reimbursement is elevated. And so that's, that's a huge factor. And so that's a huge factor that helps the sustainability of this program. So when we got the provisional certification in July of last year, we were able to move to that new Medicaid rate on a provisional basis. And we are scheduled at the end of this month for our final full certification visit. So should we pass that, which I am confident that we will, we will be secured with that new Medicaid enhanced rate for at least a two-year period, and then a review cycle happens about every two years.
Good question.
Could you, I'm always, whenever I sit in meetings with you, I'm always so fascinated by the number of employees that Elizabeth Layton Center has. Could you let citizens know about what your employees look like, the number of employees that you have, and how many people are out here serving citizens?
Yes. We couldn't have the successes in this community that we have without our hardworking staff. That's the heart of our mission. And so I am excited to say we are up to about 157 staff at this time. That's an 18% growth in the last year. This has been a huge part of our strategic plan, as you are aware, over the last year. And so just enhanced recruiting efforts, major enhancements to pay, we put a lot of work to revising our wage scales in a way that could be sustainable for us. And that, and a lot of new training, we have a wellness benefits program for staff now. So we're finding that these new strategies are really helping our workforce recruiting. For me, one of the best things about our staff is that despite those great new wages, most of the folks aren't there for the money. Most people are there because they feel very passionately about this mission. With 22% of people experiencing a behavioral health condition in a year, that means all of us know somebody, if it's not ourselves, we know someone who struggles with a mental health condition, and that's why the folks are there doing the work. So that's exciting to see. It's really, it's really cool to be a part of that kind of passion and effort.
Of those 157, you probably don't have a true stat. Do you have an idea how many live in Ottawa, your surrounding area, or local folks?
That's a real fair question, and I can get you that data. What I can say right now is about 50, no, I would say about 60% of our employees are on the Franklin County side. Now, where they specifically live, I don't have that information. I do know that some of our licensed professionals come from the Lawrence area or the Johnson County area, but most of our staff are near our local area. And again, about 60% of them are here on our Franklin side.
Awesome. Yeah, even 75, I mean, that's a great number of employees from, you know, local employees. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
Anybody have more questions, Leslie? I just want to reiterate, I think you mentioned about it, your participation in partnership with the police department here and how important that is. And so, Adam, that goes for you, too. Just thank you for your guys, you need to have a close bonding relationship. Some of your customers are the same people many times, and so you deal with them that way. And I think it's important to have a good relationship, the two of you. So thank you for that, your willingness to work together, so.
Fortunate to have a good partner in chief and just to enjoy him personally. It's nice to work together.
That's very excellent. I see Paul Summers on the board, too, so Paul, congratulations, I thank you for your service in that, too. Yeah, there you go. Along with Sarah. So good. Let's see those names on there, but very good. Highly educated staff, it looks like, to be very good. Any more questions? Take it under advisement. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you so much for your consideration.
Our next request is a new request to, from the Life Care Center, and the 2025 funding request for, for the Life Care Center is for $10,000. The request and the application highlighted four items, and that would be for parenting education, fatherhood-specific education, community Christmas event for the clients, and items for the client store. And I have Kelsey Morris listed here on as the person that we've been in contact with, but I don't believe is available for questions. We're happy to reach out with any questions you might have. I don't believe we have anyone online either.
Was she invited to attend? Yeah, we reached out and made an invitation.
Yes.
Okay. Nothing else, I guess we'll go on. Next one?
Okay. Our next new request is from the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce, and their 2025 funding request is for $15,000. And the application has that, those dollars supporting three initiatives, including annual events, which might be something like the Flea Junk and Trunk Event, Ladies Night Out, and the Mayor's Tree Lighting, as well as Ottawa Tourism Materials and Promotion, and then also support of the Leadership Franklin County Program. And Ryland Miller is here, available for questions.
Okay. Right. Give me twice over. Lucky you guys. Before we do get started, I did want to make a mention of something. Just a couple of days ago, I would have been able to have the opportunity to meet with Zach Clayton, City Manager, Brian Silcot, and Mayor Skidmore at Ottawa University's campus. Excuse me, I don't want to leave out Sarah Stauffer as well. One of the questions brought up in that meeting was, what's one of the greatest strengths of the Ottawa community? And City Manager Silcot mentioned that the people in this community are one of the best strengths we had, and I want to echo that as I look through this partner request sheet, all these individuals who luckily get to be chamber members, as well as fantastic community leaders, and there's a lot of great individuals standing before you making these requests today, and I'm lucky to be one of them. Thank you.
On the request, I see you're kind of, I mean, these are some things we currently are doing. Are there some increase to activities or some kind of to substantiate the request, I guess I'm trying to ask?
Absolutely. No, it's a great question. So why I'm here in front of you today is not particularly because we have needs. We absolutely do have them. We have to be able to pay our staff. We have to be able to keep our lights on. But the reason we're here is not because we have needs, but because we fulfill needs. And we've been able to do that for coming on 100 years now as an organization, being incorporated in 1929. And so we have a significant amount of historical backing, but also a significant amount of consistency over the years in supporting our community. And so really what I bring before you now is some of the fantastic programs that we did, we'll do for now decades, but particularly aren't revenue streams for our organization, and they really do support not only the quality of life, the opportunity for individuals to be well-informed. In regards to tourism, there's some aspects of that as well, but then also the leadership cultivation through our LFC program as well. So that's the reason I'm before you today.
Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions of Ryland?
Ryland, if this Leadership Franklin County, we've gone through, I'm sure that there's several people up here that have gone through Leadership Franklin County. Historically, what kind of, what kind of activity or what kind of participation do you have from City of Ottawa employees?
Yeah, absolutely. If you see in your packet, we've actually had, I believe it's eight individuals in the past seven years that are City of Ottawa employees one way or another, whether that's the Ottawa Police Force, Char, County, all of the, a significant amount of City employees have been able to utilize that program. Just that doesn't also, that includes, as I say, three of our five commissioners have been in the class. Crowley's been able to serve on the board, though has not taken the class.
I learned a lot. Learned a lot on the board.
And so the reach that the City of Ottawa has for Franklin County has been massive. And along with those individuals who get to be able to go through the class, there's also a significant amount of individuals who get to serve on panels through nine months as well, who'd be able to educate the students, the participants, on what takes place with the City of Ottawa as well. And so we believe there's a significant amount of synergy between Leadership Franklin County and the work that the City of Ottawa does.
So is Leadership Franklin County, is it kind of geared towards government employees? What kind of business owners? What kind of people do you try to get into that?
Absolutely. The greatest part about it is really anybody can. We actually, this last year, would have had an individual who was retired even. But usually that looks like individuals that are in the community, working, the stipulation is you have to either live or work in the community. And so that sometimes looks like nonprofit leaders, that sometimes look like government employees, that sometimes looks like small business owners, and really everything in between. And so I wouldn't say it's geared towards one individual demographic for participants. I would say, though, that it does a good job of, one, blanketing those individuals who can be part of the class, but also the content that is taught throughout that nine months is also pretty blanketed throughout the entire county, but high concentration, City of Ottawa, but also the different categories, the different conversations that are being had, and the different sections of those classes are also quite diverse as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. It's a good program. It was a long time ago. When I was in, actually, it was called Franklin Territory Leadership Class. It was a long time ago. John Brown was our president. That was a long story.
But they were talking about the incorporation of City of Ottawa, and you were there for that, right?
Yeah, I signed, you'll see my signature on the. Why don't you tell us a little bit, of course, the City of Ottawa is also a member of the chamber as well, so I want to make sure people understand that as well. And this will be the first time the chamber's asked for funding from the city specifically to this purpose. I just want to make sure people understand that, too. But, and again, we're always looking for new ways to do things to help people out. So I'm not opposed to this, but we'll sure talk about it. And I don't think anybody has any more questions of Ryland. We'll sure take a look at it.
Will any of these items go away if they're not, or be diminished if the request is not allocated?
I would sure hope not. That's definitely not our intentions. I would mention that for full transparency, whenever I was able to move into this role, we did have to be able to take a pay cut to be able to allow me to be able in this position. We also are incredibly blessed to have a 16-year veteran, Sherry Lund, on our staff as well. And she is also, well, one, has a fantastic passion for this organization. Where she sits right now, I'm not sure, it would be, it'd be almost impossible to be able to have someone fill into her shoes with an easy transition with where we're at right now. And then I also, and I don't know if I stated this specifically in the packet, but not to drag this meeting on, because I believe I'm standing in between you guys and the exit door, but it would have been, this last fall, we would have done a survey for our membership, where we actually had a very large portion of our membership, I think it was about a third of our membership, be able to take part in that survey. Something that, one of the biggest takeaways we got in that survey was the, one, that they were incredibly pleased with the work that we were doing now, and the second point was that they have a desire, an appetite for more services to be able to have. And what that really means, definitely at that point when we had two employees, was we were incredibly stretched, very thin. And since then, we've been very blessed to be able to add a part-time individual to our staff. So we're now getting pretty close to that maximum capacity, or that maximum work effort there with our staff. But what I look at for this money specifically is when it comes down to sustainability. And so, as I was mentioning, for the President/CEO position, the Office Manager position, if we're looking at what this organization looks like in two, three years from now, I think it would be very difficult for the organization to be able to continue to do all of the services that we do, continue to grow to the needs of our membership, or what they're at least stating that they need, without more community support. And this is one of those avenues that we are looking into.
That's good. Do you happen to know other communities that support their chamber financially besides membership? I'm not familiar with any, but do others?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. It's actually rather uncommon not to see that way.
That's what I was going to ask you, and most of it's been all due driven, but okay, I get you, that makes sense to me.
You betcha. And we're pretty lucky for the fact that we have a little bit less than half of our annual revenue come from dues. That's actually rather low for most chambers. Usually that number's significantly higher, which does put them at an elevated risk, definitely whenever you have the possibility of a pandemic to come through, where it's pretty difficult to be able to collect dues whenever businesses aren't open. So with that being said, no, there's been, the communities that I'm familiar with, definitely in an hour radius, do indeed receive support from their cities.
I kind of figured that was the case. Well, I always appreciate your weekly reports online. You're a gifted writer, and I appreciate you're very good at notifying and educating us what's going on in our communities. So good job with that, Ryland.
It's incredibly kind, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
Do you have, as you're talking about, you know, membership and the funds that come in from that, how many members do you guys have?
Yes, sir. We're just shy of 300 members at the moment being. And this individual that we do have coming onto our staff technically will be a membership director. So I have a strong feeling that that number will rise over this next year. We've been able to stay pretty constant through this year of having one less employee, and so I do expect that to change, but yeah, I believe 286 is what it was. We actually would have just got one yesterday, so, yeah, 286 is what we're, I believe.
Fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? We're good? Okay. Thanks, Ryland.
Appreciate you guys.
All right. Melanie?
Thank you. So I just want to make sure, yes, I didn't forget anyone. And I do want to circle back around to the information that was provided in the packet and the memo. And, you know, we talked a little bit about the financials for this fund, and I did mention in the memo, I had a paragraph in there talking about revenue-driven sources for this fund. And I think you heard about a variety of services that are provided across our community tonight from all of our different agencies that are here and have applied for funds. But I would be remiss if I didn't, I didn't talk about other revenue sources that might be available for support of a fund like this, and that could be unexpected or unbudgeted type of sales tax stream that might be somewhat of a windfall or something that we didn't expect to happen. It could also be generated by something such as a transient guest tax or any other type of revenue stream like that that doesn't currently exist, that we don't currently bring into the city funds as of this point in time. So also, I mentioned property taxes, it doesn't have to be the only revenue source that supports a fund like this, that's just how it's been supported in the past. So again, more conversation about that down the road, and now I'm the one standing between you and the exit door. So with that, unless you have questions about this fund or the funding for this fund or any of our agencies that were still here, then we'll close this item.
Good. Got a lot of homework, I can see that, all right, so it'll be good for us all. All right. Melanie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go to City Manager comments.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, want to highlight just a couple of activities that are going on. It seems like maybe perhaps mine's the one now. All right. We want to remind everyone that cemetery staff is currently removing our decorations from the markers that aren't currently on the gravestone itself, not on the base, but on the stone itself, and it can also be retained if there is a sleeved hook that can be placed into the base insert, so it can be easily removed for maintenance. And so we just want to remind everyone that in accordance with our municipal code and for having a good, clean, and tidy cemetery, that we do go around and pick that up one week after the holidays. And just as a reminder, for the holidays of Easter, Mother's Day, Father's Day, and Memorial Day, those are when the decoration of graves is allowed to occur. The splash pad, you know, it's been a hit, but with the increased traffic and the participation amongst children of all ages, the need for some rules has been identified. And so we've created a page and some information for that, and as well as encouraging residents, if they recognize a problem, to please call 229-3653, just so that we're aware of the problem and we're not finding out about it on a holiday via social media. Want to invite everyone out to our June 7 concert series at Legacy Square for Savannah Chestnut and the Fieldhands. And then, of course, we'll have one later this summer when the temperature's good and turned up in August with Clever Max, who was here last year as well. So we invite everyone to come on down. And I know this was mentioned earlier today, but the City Band Concert Series, so the next one will be June 11 at 7:30, and as you know, with inclement weather, it'll occur in the OMA. And want to invite everyone to register if they're able for their children to do Fishing with the Firefighter on Saturday, June 22 from 9 to noon, and that'll be at Orless Cox. And they can register via the city's Facebook page, and there's an event page created as well, and that can be reserved through the link.
And so there really will be fishing, and where will it be?
Tell us more about that. There's not a whole lot of fish. I've driven by Orless Cox many times.
Well, as you know, historically, this has been a well-attended event, and we didn't necessarily say what you were fishing for.
Oh, okay. Here we go.
Good, didn't it?
Surprise, surprise. All right, very good. Can't wait.
Want to just highlight this week's activities for our library. Tomorrow's activities will include toddler time and some really cool basic robotics starting at 3:00 PM, and then storytime and robotics on Friday. So if folks are looking for activities, we encourage you to check the city's Facebook page or the library page, or it's also listed on the chamber and the main street calendars as well. And then our commission budget review next week will be our special revenue funds, and then we would like to point out that I, that we've changed this date for the planning commission hearing for the CIP from commission hearing for the CIP from the 7th to the 14th. And we do anticipate, obviously, you can see in here, there's dates where we can have any discussion along the way for anything that we've discussed regarding our, our general property tax levy. So that's the point of how this is structured, so it can be revisited. And then just some tentative items coming up for the next meeting on the 12th at 4:00 PM here in the commission chambers. And want to welcome our new employees. We have Matt in Public Works. We got Mark, who's our Superintendent for Water at the water plant. Blake, who is a new lineman apprentice. And Nicole, who's joined us upstairs as a Development Assistant. And you'll see her at the Customer Service Window for our Neighborhood Services. And then our new, newest police officer, Dylan, who's now at KLET-C. And David, who is our newest power plant operator. So we're happy to have these new teammates and really pleased that they chose the City of Ottawa to work and to give their time and their dedication and to serve their community. So with that, if there are no questions for myself or anyone else on staff, I'll turn it over.
I do have two questions, but for directors. Director Hayfley, I know Mr. Silcot mentioned the cemetery stuff, but I've had a few folks reach out to me about if they're not sure, if they put some stuff in places that they're not supposed to be and they're picked up, will those items be thrown away? Or will they be stored somewhere that maybe they could retrieve them?
I don't want to give a false answer.
Okay.
So let me talk to DJ tomorrow, and I'll get back to you.
And then, I mean, if that's something that could be, you know, passed on via social media or something, just so they can kind of...
The code says they'll be...
Code does say they'll be thrown away, but I just want to make sure that we didn't save anything.
Okay. And then I have one other question for Director Nease. I've had a few individuals reach out to me recently about the trash bags that's in Walmart's road right off of there. Have you have an opportunity to have the nuisance officer that you have reach out to them and see what that's all about? There's a significant amount of black trash bags just laying in the road.
Yes. I know that that was a topic of conversation on, Director Hayfley, when did you bring that to my attention? Is that Monday?
I do.
Monday? And I, there was conversation about it, and I wouldn't be able to tell you what, what the result of that has been.
But they have reached out to whomever, whether it be Walmart or an individual that may be leaving it?
I can't answer that for you at this time, Commissioner. I'll have an answer tomorrow.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any other questions anybody have?
Okay, about comments from the governing body, let's start with Commissioner Clayton. I just want to say, I appreciate what Ryland and Director Landis mentioned, you know, getting us out the door because we're almost at the two-hour mark. But also to say, you know, it is our job to sit up here. This is a large amount of money that we're looking at allocating. And I know myself, and I'm assuming most of the people sitting up here, time is not our concern. Making the best decision we can possible with the funds that we are given is that. So while we appreciate that, you guys are free to talk as long as you would like in my book. But with that, I would, I would end and just say that personally, on a personal note, I guess I'm really shocked at the numbers of poverty in Ottawa. 63% I saw did not report. So I don't know what that number truly is, under $12,000. And just, I'm trying to imagine myself trying to live on $12,000. And so, thank you for that. It's not, it's great information, that's not great information, so.
Mr. Taylor?
I want to go back up to the top of the agenda and want to congratulate Chief Dylan. And I have known Sean, Chief Dylan, I'm still going to call you Sean, sorry, for, I don't know, 12, 13 years, if not more than that. And want to congratulate him for being sworn in as our new chief. It's not an easy task to do what you're doing, but I know that you're a man of few words. I mean, I, like I said, I've known you for many years, but you say very little, but what you do say, you mean. And you lead with grace. And I know that you will lead this department with grace. And I also want to publicly thank you for your service in the military. And I know that the things that you've learned in the military will help make our fire department even stronger. So, you know, great admiration for what you're doing at the fire department. I appreciate your wife and your three daughters, they're amazing. And welcome you to the post. So welcome, Chief.
Absolutely. Commissioner Crowley?
I have no comment.
Pro Tim Allen?
Talking about the city band earlier gave me some sort of weird flashback to COVID times when there was band practice in my basement from my middle schoolers who were practicing the trumpet. And so I just wanted to guarantee everybody that the city band performance outdoors would be much more enjoyable than that. And your eardrums will be saved. So I would highly recommend going to that. That's all I have.
That's great. That's why I encourage my kids to play the oboe. Nobody can hear that, right? Anyway, I just want to want to say, Michael, thank you for getting potholes filled in your department. That's been the biggest thing seemed like to me. People still hate potholes everywhere, but gradually they're getting filled. And I know they've got a lot of balls in the air with the tree limb removal and that, taking care of the potholes. But I've been to other cities and other communities, and we should be very blessed to have the road which we have here compared to some other towns I've been in. So keep up the good job. You're doing a good, don't read, don't read the internet too often, just let that slide. I'll read it for you, okay?